Morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Wednesday, April 21st, 2021, meeting of the Lake Havasu City Planning and Zoning Commission. If you would please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Here.
Here.
Michael Bergen.
Here.
Doug Hardy.
Donald Bergen.
Dan McGowan.
Chad Nelson.
Susanna Ballard.
Matthew Mitchell.
Here.
And Sam Levine.
Did you call me?
And Mr. Harris.
I'm here.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing that Mr. Nelson is not here, Ms. Ballard, would you please come up and take his place? And minutes of the last meeting, are there any additions, deletions, corrections by any of the commissioners? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the last minutes.
And a second? We have a motion by Mr. McGowan and a second by Mr. Hardy to approve the minutes of the last meeting, any discussion? Hearing none, let's go ahead and place our votes. Has Ms. Ballard signed in? Okay.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. Moving on, correspondence and announcements, Mr. Morris.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we have none, thank you.
Okay, then, let me start by saying that this is a public hearing, and there is a structured order to the proceeding. The city staff will present each item, and then there will be time for the commission to ask questions of the staff, and then the applicant will have the opportunity to present their case to the commission. That being done, we will then open the proceeding to the public for their questions and input. I would ask that any one of the public that wishes to speak limit their trips to the podium and microphone to one only, keep all comments to less than five minutes, and to stay on point and not discuss subject matter that is not pertinent to the decision being considered here today. After public testimony is taken, I will then close the public hearing and bring the motion back to the table for city staff's recommendation, discussion amongst the commission, and eventually a motion to approve or disapprove. The first item on today's agenda is item number ID 122781. It is a request for a preliminary subdivision plat for Esperanza 2 condos at 470 North Lake Havasu Avenue, tract 2252, block 3, lot 6, creating 12 residential condominiums and covered parking. Mr. Morris, your presentation, please.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you. The subject property is located on Lake Havasu Avenue, a little north of, that would be Palaverde Boulevard. It is basically an expansion of the first phase of, what's it called, Esperanza condos. Here's the subject property, the first phase of the Esperanza condos is to the north. We'll go to the zoning map here, here's the existing Esperanza condos, here's the subject property. The rest of the lots on that side of the street are zoned RM. Across the street, there's a C1 zone, a C2 zone, and then RM zoning. And then the zoning behind these lots is zoned R1. Here's a layout of the condominium plat, it's 12 units with the covered parking and the guest parking. That concludes staff's presentation, open any comments the commission may have, thank you.
Are there any questions of staff by Commissioners? Any questions at all? Okay, is the applicant present? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
If you guys have any questions.
Any questions of the applicant by Commissioners? Anybody?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Okay, this is a public hearing, I will open the microphone to the public, is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this item? Anybody whatsoever? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion and bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. Based on the findings, the Development Review Committee recommends approval of a preliminary subdivision plat for Esperanza 2 condos, 470 North Lake Havasu Avenue, tract 2252, block 3, lot 6, creating 12 residential condominiums and covered parking. Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, questions of staff, or we are at the table for discussion and/or a recommendation?
I would like to move to approve land use action ID 21-2781, a preliminary subdivision plat for Esperanza 2 condos at 470 North Lake Havasu Avenue, tract 2252, block 3, lot 6, creating 12 residential condominiums and covered parking.
I second the motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Still, a second by Mr. McGowan. Is there any further discussion on the item? Anybody at all? Okay, hearing none, let's call for the question.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, congratulations. Next item on today's agenda is ID number 21-2782. This is a request for a preliminary subdivision plat for La Noria condos at 3448 Oro Grande Boulevard, tract 2217, block 7, lot 2, creating nine residential condominium units. Mr. Morris, your presentation, please.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you again. The subject property is located at the south, it's going to be the northeast corner of Oro Grande Boulevard and Buena Vista Avenue. Here's the location map, the fire station, there's a fire station on Buena Vista Avenue, diagonally southeast, southwest, excuse me, southeast of the subject property. The zoning for the subject property is R3. This is a subject of a recently rezoned property, the commission recommended approval, and the city council approved the rezone for this property from C2 to R3 about six months ago, I believe. So now the subject, the property owner is moving forward with the condominium plat. It's R3 on both sides and across Oro Grande, and C1 zoning to the south, and then some existing R1 to the northeast of the property. The property, the project is for a total of nine units. Here's the unit layout for, it'll be a condominium against subdivision. Here's a little more detail, the nine units will each have one, one car garage in them, and then there'll be some guest parking to meet the parking requirements, and it looks like they have some amenities for potentially a pool or that sort of thing in the common area. That concludes staff's presentation, open any comments you may have, thank you.
Any questions of staff by Commissioners? Anybody at all? Okay, is the applicant present? Please state your name for the record.
Yeah, Lee Johnson with APL Surveying, here just answering questions if you got any.
Any questions of the applicant by Commissioners?
Thank you, Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Okay, this is a public hearing, so I will now open it up to the public, is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this item? Pro or con? Either or? Anybody at all? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion and bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. Based on the findings, Development Review Committee recommends approval of a preliminary subdivision plat for La Noria condos, 3448 Oro Grande Boulevard, tract 2217, block 7, lot 2, creating nine residential condominiums. Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, any questions of staff? Discussion and/or a motion? Mr. Bergen? Go ahead. Mr. Bergen, go ahead and push your microphone.
Let me just ask staff, it seems that, it seems that nine is quite a lot on that particular location.
Well, nine is something that, nine is a number that the developer has gone with, and it meets all the development code regulations for that property.
It does.
They, it's up to them to determine how many lots, how many they want to, how many units they want to develop on that within the boundaries that are allowed through the zoning district. So in this case, the nine that they are asking for meet all the requirements, so they're within the zoning boundary or regulations for that property.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we are at the table for motion and/or further discussion. Anybody? Mr. Moore, or Mr. Still?
Right, again, I just recommend an approval for the request for a preliminary subdivision plat for La Noria condos, 3448 Oro Grande Boulevard, tract 2217, lot 7, lot 2, 3, 9 residential condominiums.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Ballard, do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Still to approve ID 212782 with staff's recommendations. Any further discussion? Hearing none, again, let's call for the question.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, congratulations once again. The third item today, on today's agenda is ID 212782. It is a request for a preliminary subdivision plat, wait a minute, sorry, wrong one, let me restart. The third item today is ID 212779, a request for a zone change for 1035 Tacoma Boulevard South and 2671 Fremont Drive, tract 2285, block 1, lot 2B, and parcel D from limited commercial district C1 to general commercial district C2. Mr. Morris, your presentation, please.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you again. The subject property is located at the corner of Tacoma Boulevard South and Fremont Drive, that'd be the northwest corner generally. Exactly at that corner actually is an existing gas station. The property owner, this, the applicant for this, is the property owner owns that gas station and recently acquired these two, other two parcels that have bought it. So the parcels are not at that corner, but they're near that corner of Tacoma and Fremont. Highway 95 here is obviously, and then Sweetwater Avenue. The new entrance to the Havasu Riviera is to the west, a little ways at that intercept, at that signal light that hopefully will be energized soon. Here's the current zoning for the property, for the area. The corner lot that the applicant owns is zone C2, the two subject lots on either side of that C2 property are zone C1. Across Tacoma Boulevard, it's commercial South Gate, and then across an alley, there's Fremont Court, and that area is zone residential, commercial South Gate, yeah, residential South Gate District, which is a multiple family district. Most of the lots in that area actually developed as single-family homes, although the zoning is multiple family. Across Highway 95 is Sweetwater Avenue with some C2 zoning at the corner of Tacoma and 95, and then some commercial South Gate zoning again, going up on, if you go east on Sweetwater Avenue. The applicant's letter of intent states a desire to rezone that property to match their existing C2 zoning of the gas station that they own at the corner. There was a citizens' meeting held on March 27th, a couple of the property owners attended the meeting. At that meeting, the applicant suggested that they would like to use the properties to expand the existing gas station to provide better access for boats and RVs. If the reasoned request is approved, any uses permitted in the C2 district may be allowed on that property, and of course, any future development is required to go through design review as applicable. With that concludes staff's presentation, open any questions the commission may have, thank you.
Okay, any questions of staff by the Commissioners? Mr. Still?
Yeah, how big, Luke, is the total parcel when he assembles that with the existing gas station?
Thank you for the question. The existing, the two properties under consideration are total about an acre, and it looks like the existing gas station property, I don't have that figure exactly, but just eyeballing it, looks like it might be half an acre or so compared to that, so looking like it maybe an acre and a half is my rough estimate.
Any other questions of staff by Commissioners? Nobody at all? Okay, is the applicant present? Please come forward, state your names for the record.
Good morning, my name is Rob Sampson with Selberg Associates, I've also got the property owner with me here as well.
My name is Don Bradley, I'm the property owner and the applicant.
We're here to answer any of your questions.
Any questions of the applicant by Commissioners? Any questions at all? Mr. Gordon?
Yeah, I guess, just a question on what the, I mean, the intent states to expand the gas station, any other improvements proposed, or just better circulation, parking, more pumps, like, what's the intent?
This time, we really haven't gone through any of the design. The original intent, though, is to extend, expand the gas station, make it easier for onsite mobility, RVs and boats and so on.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, this is a public hearing, if there is anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this item, pro or con, now is the time? Anybody at all? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing portion of the meeting and bring it back, oh, excuse me. There is one written comment that Madam Secretary Maria is going to read into the record.
Regarding case number 21-0040008 for Bradley Rezone, submitted on 4/21 of 2021. Actually, it was submitted yesterday, 4/20 at 6:20 PM. Concern of Harold Musket, this email is from Harold Musket. Number one, why was the subject property zoned C1 originally? Number two, why was the corner property originally C2? Number three, when, when then, why then were their properties not combined or zoned the same in the past? And for, how and, how can properties be rezoned with no express plans other than to combine the lots in the future? Although the owner said he wants expansion of the gas station to large vehicles and RVs, he also implied he would build a two-story shopping center, when I voiced my concerns about what was going on to be built next to me. I guess the city wants public comment, but hard to comment on a no plan at a public comment meeting or a planning commission meeting. Number five, I also inquired about the alleyway and what use that would, that would be to the owner's gas station, if any, but without any plans to look at, I and your city observer cannot answer that. He said typically there would be a wall and some planters. This was not in the notes about what was discussed on March 26th of 21. At the first meeting I was requested to be at, it appeared evident to me quickly that this has nothing to do with what will be filling, filling the now empty zones, properties, as to do with just get the zoning changed. At that meeting, I also asked why these properties were zoned differently in the first place, and no one there was able to answer that. And in fact, no one from the city has been to, has been to look at the properties either, city observer said.
Okay, I have a question of staff. Would we like to comment or speculate on the reasons for these questions, answers to these questions?
I certainly will, I'll try to indulge you in the reasoning that I can come up with this, to the answers to these questions. The first question, why was the subject property originally zoned C1? That was well before my time, or maybe most of our times here, but I would presume typically a C1 zoning, which is a limited commercial zoning, is something for, not terribly intense commercial uses. And many times, it's as a buffer between multiple family and higher density commercial uses. So in this case, it would seem reasonable to have some C1 zonings between multiple family zoning and C2 and higher, more intense uses, commercial uses. So that's probably why it was zoned C1. The C2 lot on the corner, corner lots have a lot more visibility for the most part, and they'll have, they're more likely to be a C2 or a higher intense use, things like gas stations or corner lots are fairly typical. As far as question number three, why were the properties not combined or zoned at the same time in the past? Well, at this point, they're trying to rezone those to the same, I don't know when the past, it was always been that way, no one's moved forward to, for requests is my supposition on that. So at this point, they're asking to rezone those. If they were to be developed as one piece of property, then they would have to combine them also. How can the properties be rezoned with no express plans? If they were to come forward with a specific development plan, then that would be what we would call a plan development, and then we would then hold them to that plan development. In this case, as is not uncommon for a rezone, that a property owner may not know exactly what they want to build there, or they may have a pretty good idea, but they still may want to have flexibility to allow whatever is allowed in that zoning district. So in this case, the property owner's moving forward with a C2 request, he's in, his letter of intent, or actually his, his communication with staff and with the public has been that he wants to expand the gas station, that's certainly within his right as a C2 if it gets rezoned to C2. Why the alleyway and what use it would be, that would be looked at when the property goes through design review, it would be reviewed for traffic, building, fire, off-site improvements, curb, gutter, sidewalk, things like that, as well as sewer and water. The traffic division didn't review any plans for the use of that alley. Typically, alleys, of course, would provide only secondary access, the primary access would come off the main streets. So the alley could be used, in our development code, there is some buffering requirements between residential and commercial, so that typically involves at least a 10-foot landscape buffer and some sort of screening wall between the residential and the commercial, so that would be addressed. Staff has certainly been to the property many times, and I think, hopefully I've addressed those questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Morris, that was a good job of addressing that. I'll go one step further and address item number four. The properties typically either warrant rezoning or don't, and this is a, an upzoning, if you will, to C2, but it doesn't hinder the buffering of the intended uses. You still have that C1 buffering, so it doesn't have to be a planned development, just a little further explanation there. Okay, now I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Based on the findings, Development Review Committee recommends the commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for a zone change for 1035 Tacoma Boulevard South and 2671 Fremont Drive, tract 2285, block 1, lot 2B, and parcel D from limited commercial C1 to general commercial C2. As a reminder, this item will go to the city council for their May 25th meeting, thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, we are at the table for discussion and/or a motion. Anybody?
I'd like to discuss just a little bit.
Mr. Still?
There was a rezoning that was turned down for C2 on the corner of Park Avenue and the highway about a year and a half ago. I've heard some concerns from city council when I listened to some of these C1 to C2 zoning changes regarding storage and if it's going in an appropriate spot. Certainly, this is a spot for stor, I mean, the zoning would allow for storage. I personally, I just want to say this, because I personally don't see why somebody had put storage there. It's not the ideal location for storage, it's probably kind of expensive for storage of land, but nevertheless, I think it's important at least to put that on record, that this has been turned down in the past, and we are losing the buffer between the residential and the C2 by rezoning it. I would have preferred to see a, a planned development, so there's some kind of commitment there. With that said, I'll probably vote for this, because I don't think storage is going to happen, and what he's trying to do is reasonable, but I think all those points just should be on record for city council's consideration.
Thank you. Anybody else? Discussion and/or a motion? Commissioners, anybody? I'll entertain a motion at this time. Mr. McGowan?
I make a motion to approve item 1D21-2779, a request for a zone change for 1035 Tacoma Boulevard South and 2671 Fremont Drive, tract 2285, block 1, lot 2B, and parcel D for limited commercial district C1 to general commercial district C2.
Okay, we have, we have a motion by Mr. McGowan, do we have a second? And we have a second by Mr. Bergen to approve action number 212779 with staff's recommendations. Any further discussion on the item? Okay, let's call for the question.
Motion passes four to one.
Okay, the next and last item on today's agenda is ID 212778. It is a request for a planned development rezone of 200 London Bridge Road, tract 2183, block 6, lot 1, from limited commercial district C1 to general commercial planned development district C2/PD, to allow exceptions from code section 14.03.03.C.17B.ii, B3 and 4, separation of 500 feet from public park, playground, or recreational facility, and an establishment having an Arizona Spiritus liquor license for a proposed marijuana establishment. Mr. Morris, your presentation, please.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, we need to recuse ourselves.
Okay, we're, we're having Mr. Lu, or Mr. Still and Mr. Gordon recuse themselves for this, and they will be stepping down and presenting for this issue. Do we have any other Commissioners?
Mr. Mitchell is on Zoom. Mr. Mitchell is on Zoom.
All right, Mr. Mitchell, are you there?
He was.
Yes, I am, and I'm ready to participate.
Okay, we're going to have you participate as a stand-in on this issue.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Morris, your presentation.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for reading that lengthy introduction, appreciate it.
You wrote it.
The subject property is located at 200 London Bridge Road, in the area of, well, most people probably find this, easiest way to orient this lot would be by the swap meet parking lot on London Bridge Road. It's at the north, excuse me, the southwest corner of London Bridge Road in Paso del Sol. There are city-owned parking lots for the swap meet, also a city-owned parking lot in this block, and then city-owned parking lot across London Bridge Road, that also serves as overflow parking for the special events that happen at the, the Lake Havasu State Park, which is directly west of those city-owned properties. The zoning, the current zoning for the property is C2, excuse me, C1. The properties in that whole area on that side of London Bridge Road are zoned C1. The properties across London The properties across London Bridge Road are zoned C2, and then the state park land is zoned AP Agricultural Preserve. This is really a kind of a two-fold request. The first part deals with marijuana establishment and separation requirements per development code. When recreational marijuana was allowed by this, through the state vote, the city adopted the same standards for marijuana establishment, which was recreational marijuana, as it was in place for medical marijuana. And those include some separation requirements. Among those, 1,000 feet from another marijuana establishment, and then 1,000 feet from daycare or school, a school or daycare center. This location meets those requirements. It also required, this current city code also requires a 500-foot separation from a church, a boundary of a residential zone or district, a park, playground, recreational facility, or an establishment having a liquor license. This location meets the first two of those separation requirements, but not the public park recreation area or liquor license separation requirements. Here's again a map of the subject property. This ring represents 500-foot radius around that property. Within that 500-foot radius is, of course, there's the Lake Havasu State Park to the west. There are three liquor license holders within 500 feet, up here at the Hampton Inn, down here at the, one of the fraternal organization, and another fraternal organization over here. The next slide has a little more description of the different exceptions they're asking for. The Lake Havasu State Park exception, that park, that facility is located about 300 feet from the property toward the west. It does have access that's limited. There's a gate that controls the access for vehicles and pedestrians, and then it's opened up during special events, and the fence surrounds the boundary of the state park in that area. So there's not really much in the way of direct access from the state park to the subject property. As far as the liquor license exceptions, licenses are issued for three properties, as I explained. The first one's about 150 feet south, the second one's about 275 feet northwest, that's the Hampton Inn, and then the American Legion, about 400 feet to the southeast. Now, there are no, like, typical bars or restaurants in that 500-foot radius that are open to general public. These are more clubs and, of course, the hotel, so they're generally not open to the public sort of liquor license locations. The second part of this request really is the plan development. And so it was a development plan that was submitted as part of this request. Here's a portion of that, here's the site plan for that plan development. So here's, orient ourselves, London Bridge Road over here on the, on the left-hand side, Paseo del Sol Avenue to the south, to the bottom of the page. Here's the subject building itself. Here's the property. What they're proposing is to do a drive-through around this building that would be accessed from the city parking lot area here. It would go along the north side of the building, wrap around it, and then exit onto Paseo del Sol Avenue. They also provided some renderings for the property. Here's the rendering from Paseo del Sol, and so here's the, the city parking area, and this would be the driveway entrance for the drive-through, wrapping around and coming through. The building itself measures a proposed about 3, 3,500 square feet of a footprint with two levels. The bottom level would be for the marijuana business. The upper level would be a couple different suites, an entryway, foyer, if you will, and then a patio, a covered patio in the back here. And again, here's another view. This is from London Bridge Road and Paseo del Sol. The entrance to the drive-through is behind this building, wraps around it again, and then exits onto Paseo del Sol. This, something to keep in mind with this property is that because this is a planned development request, any development, if they could, if this gets approved, any development would substantially need to meet this proposed layout. So that effectively eliminates things like storage units, storage yards, warehouses, things like that, things that won't lend themselves to this sort of layout for the site plan. This, of course, will have to go through design review and review by the fire department, building department, public works, sewer, water, any sort of development, before any sort of development gets issued permits for this project. That concludes staff's presentation. Open to any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, we are at the questioning of staff part of the presentation. Are there any questions of staff? Mr. Bergen.
Question of staff is, going from C1 to C2, is that a, considered a zone change?
Mr. Bergen, Commissioners, thank you. Yes, that is considered a zone change. This is called a planned development zone change. So in that case, a planned development means they're asking for some sort of exception from the underlying zoning district. In this case, they're asking for exception from the separation requirements. They're also tying that to a, this plan development to a site plan that they're providing, a development plan. So anything that gets, if this gets approved, it will have to substantially meet what they're proposing as far as their site plan, their development plan.
If this is considered a zone change, why doesn't it have a sign?
Well, it, the property has signage on it, you mean, for advertising, for the sign of it, you mean?
There's no sign on the property.
It's not posted?
Well, it was, it was posted at the time. Sometimes signs get knocked down. Oh, we'll see. It certainly was posted. It was posted with two signs, a big barricade and a sign. It was advertised in the newspaper. It was also, property owners within 300 feet were notified, so all the required notifications have been met. I'm sorry if the sign has blown down. Sometimes they, it gets windy, sometimes they do blow down, so that's the only reason I can see why there's no sign there. I know it was posted there. There were two signs posted for the property.
Okay.
Any other questions? Ms. Ballard.
If you would go back to the requirements for the 500 feet.
Chairman.
If you'd be so kind to go back to your, one more slide, the 500 feet from, you said two of those met that criteria and two of those did not meet the criteria. Would you expound a little bit on the ones that don't meet the criteria?
Yes, thank you. The two that don't meet, the two that do meet the criteria, it's at least 500 feet from religious facility. There's no church within 500 feet. It's also at least 500 feet from a residential zoning district or residential use. There's no residences or residential zoning within 500 feet. So those are fine. What they're asking for are exceptions from the park, playground, recreation facility, which would be the state park, so it's definitely within 500 feet of the Lake Havasu State Park. They're also asking for an exception from separation from liquor license establishment. So that's those three establishments that have liquor licenses. So that's part of the reason for the planned development, because they're asking for those exceptions from the underlying development code for the C2 zoning district.
I would like to expand upon that and maybe ask for the record, Ms. Gary, would you explain the legal ramifications of approving those two non-complying items?
What do you mean by the legal ramifications?
Well, they're asking for exceptions to our, I guess, our guidelines or our ordinance with regards to the marijuana establishments. What kind of ramifications will there be for allowing this?
I don't know that there'll be ramifications. So the regulations are put in place to help with any secondary effects from having these types of establishments within the city. So it is before the board, and it will be before council whether or not there's, these are concerns for this particular area, and that's kind of why it's going through the plan development process. Not willing to go through a complete code change to change all of these because there's a domino effect throughout the rest of the city if we start changing some of these distance requirements. So it's looking at it as a case-by-case basis and determining whether the intent is met in these situations, whether because of the distance from the park, because of the fence around the park, does that change maybe some of the factors for the reasons why that these are in place? And the same thing with the Spiritus liquor license. It's really considering for this particular site whether these are concerning aspects or not.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted that on the record. All right, any additional questions of staff? Okay, is the applicant present? Would you like to make a presentation, please? State your name for the record.
Good morning, Michael Gordon, Doesler Land Group.
Jack Dunn, Doesler Land Group.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. We're here today representing the owner of this property who has the request in front of you today. I think, Mr. Morris, did a really thorough job of kind of explaining the conditions and the, and the request here in front of you as a, as a C2 PD. I just wanted to elaborate on a couple of things on that front. First of all, the location selection, and I'm going to let Jack in a minute expand on that a little bit as to why ownership, you know, felt that this was the right location to bring forward for discussion and consideration. But in terms of this particular use is allowed in C2 with those conditions that you saw. So when you look around town, you know, really in, in C2 locations that check all those boxes, there are very few, and the ones that are there are, have other issues, whether that's circulation, parking, parcel size, things of that nature. In fact, the couple existing facilities have a lot of those concerns from a traffic standpoint, parking and circulation and access. So ownership was looking for a location to potentially better that situation for the public, as this use has expanded from medical to recreational as well. They ultimately arrived at this location for a number of reasons, and I'll let Jack expand on that. First of all, though, we worked with staff on this issue for a while, looking at the location, was it potentially supportable? There's, you know, common parking nearby, you have public right-of-ways nearby. The, the site plan that's in front of you is a very detailed two-story commercial building with a drive-through component to it. That item was discussed very closely with staff and engineering and traffic over, you know, exiting and making sure that there's good stacking room and queuing room and not affecting the parking lot and not affecting the public roadways. So we worked through that a lot with staff. We had the discussion over C1, leaving it within the C1 district on that side of the street as a C1 PD versus calling it a C2 PD. At the end of the day, staff and the one neighbor that showed up to our public meeting who actually owns the building in, within the parking lot, the Napa Building next door, was very supportive of the use, didn't really have concerns over the use. They felt that a C, keeping it C1 PD was better. Not really sure why, probably, the feeling I got was that the concern on their part was potential other uses within C2 that could be built. However, the, the path that we went down by doing a C2 PD and presenting a very detailed site plan, building elevations, drive-through configuration, like Mr. Morris stated, it really kind of limits what can be done, you know? Storage and some of those other higher intensity uses without coming back before the board for a PD amendment or some sort of zoning change, you know, wouldn't fit within, within the plans that were submitted as part of this PD. So tried to present this very openly in a, in it with a, with a nice building configuration that allows this use, has the, has the layout configuration already worked out. It's a two-story building that's proposed, would have the marijuana use along with other potential retail and commercial uses on both the ground floor and the second floor. It's a fairly large building, so it wouldn't all be a marijuana use. It would be a mixed-use building ultimately with uses that are allowed under the C2 district within that building. We did hold a public meeting, like I said, there was one neighbor supportive of the use, didn't seem to have a problem with what was presented in that configuration. The, in terms of the two, really the two things that we don't check the boxes on, the park, and again, Mr. Morris did a great job of explaining this, but Lake Havasu State Park does exist nearby, about 300 feet away. The primary entrance is a mile plus down London Bridge Road. Obviously, that entrance right there is used for, at times, for special events, but aside from that, there really is no access to the park with this location, so we felt this was a reasonable request for a location, even though it is within the 500 feet of the park. And in terms of liquor licenses, again, you see the three stars on the screen, two of which are our private clubs, and one of which is a hotel, which is really a limited use for hotel residents primarily. So as we looked through this, really felt that those exceptions were justifiable in this location, the traffic, the circulation, the other C2 uses, the other commercial and mixed-use uses that are in the area, you know, that it wouldn't, this, this sort of use in this location compared to other potential locations in town would have minimal impact on the public, on the residents, and on the people that uses this part of town. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jack to expand on that a little bit, and then we'll answer any questions that you may have.
Thanks, Michael. I think you summed that up all really well. You know, you touched on the issues with, with the current licenses and locations, and so we kind of went out and tried to find something that was kind of a pro to both, city and, you know, potential license. So like I said, we have the state park, not a huge access point there, and then the, the private clubs and the hotel bar. So we did a lot of due diligence and made sure that we weren't near any residential, which is tough to do here in town. So, so yeah, that's, pretty much sums it up.
All right, thank you. Any questions of the applicant by Commissioners? Hearing none, thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing, so I will open it up to the public. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Pro or con? Anybody at all? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of the meeting and bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. Now I need to read this one, okay? Based on the findings, the Development Review Committee recommends that the commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for a planned development rezone of 200 London Bridge Road, tract 2183, block 6, lot 1, from limited commercial C1 to general commercial slash planned development C2/PD to allow exceptions from section 14.03.03(c). 17.b.iI.b3 and 4, separation of 500 feet from a public park, playground, or recreational facility, and an establishment having an Arizona Spiritus liquor license for a proposed marijuana establishment with the following condition. One, the property shall substantially match the development plan provided with the request. As a reminder, this item will go to the city council in their May 25 meeting for their review. Thank you.
Okay, questions of staff by Commissioners? We are at the table for discussion and/or a motion. That includes Mr. Mitchell. Anybody?
No.
Looking for a motion? Mr. McGowan.
I plan, I'd like to approve ID 1D212778, a request for a planned development rezone of 200 London Bridge Road, tract 2183, block 6, lot 1, from limited commercial district C1 to general commercial slash planned development district C-2-PD to allow exceptions from code section 14.003.03.c.17.b.iI.b3 and 4, separation of 500 feet from a public park, playground, or recreational facility, and an establishment having an Arizona Spiritus liquor license for a proposed marijuana establishment.
Do you want to include with the following conditions?
With the following conditions. I'm sorry.
Excuse me.
I knew I'll have something.
And you need to read that condition, number one.
The area map?
No, no, the...
Oh, the one, help me with that.
Right there.
That one.
Yeah.
Or this one. Just that one?
Just that line.
Oh, I'm sorry. The property shall substantially match the development plan provided with the request. Excuse me.
All right, we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? We need a second to go forward. We have a second by Mr. Hardy. So we have a motion on the table by Mr. McGowan and a second by Mr. Hardy to approve action item 21-2778 with staff's recommendation. Any further discussion? Any further discussion on the issue? Mr. Bergen.
Here, oh, excuse me. You gotta press that down.
Okay. Regarding this item, there are legal development conditions that exist. There are less than the 500 foot across from the state park with overflow parking and an entrance over there. There are three active liquor licenses within 500 feet. One is right next door, which sells liquor. We have a swap meet there on Sundays and other events. But if we have these legal conditions, I don't think we should just be wiping them out all the time. Those conditions are there for a good reason. And I cannot vote in favor of this one.
Thank you, Mr. Bergen. Any other discussion? I'd like to say that I believe that with those conditions, Lake Havasu City is an extremely difficult community, the way it is zoned, to meet all of those requirements. And I think with this selection, I think they have gone to the extent that they are trying to follow the letter of the law as closely as possible. The park is not a park with swings and slides and picnic tables and such. So I think they've mitigated that a little bit, and the liquor licenses, as mentioned, are not typically open for general sales. So I think within the confines of Lake Havasu, they've kind of, they've done their due diligence and tried to meet the conditions as best as possible in our community. So that's my position. Any further discussion? All right, let's call for the question.
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
It's scary.
What are we waiting for?
The motion is split. It's three to three.
Okay, I'm going to look for guidance now from the attorney. We have a split decision here.
In the case of a tie vote, the motion shall be considered lost. Any subsequent motion may be entertained, or it would just move forward to the City Council as a motion of disapproval, and we would note that it resulted from a tie vote of three to three.
So the motion failed for lack of a...
Due to a tie.
Majority. Are we at the table to where somebody could make another motion if they so desired?
Yes, so if the board wanted to have some additional discussion, you could have some additional discussion. If somebody wanted to make a subsequent motion in an attempt to get something that would get a majority vote, you may certainly do that.
Okay, so for the record, the motion fails because we do not have a majority. It's a split decision, three to three. We are still at the table. If there is any further discussion wanted. Anybody else? Mr. McGowan.
Like the chairman mentioned on these three bars, they're not public bars. They're not open. Well, the one is open every day and the one at the hotel, but the one directly across the street is not a bar-bar that's open seven days a week. They are not for the general public except for the hotel and the lodge across the way. I don't think they're an issue. The fence, I think it's plenty of fence. I think that I don't see where they would be a problem for the public, in my opinion.
To expand upon that, this particular issue, whether you are for or against, has become allowed by law, and Lake Havasu City has to accommodate them to the best of our abilities. Having explained earlier that there aren't, I don't know of any location in Lake Havasu that meets all of the requirements. This one is a pretty good, pretty good application. So it's not going to go away. They're going to come back with another proposed location. I think this, in a commercial area, not close to any residential or any park facilities per se, does meet the intent of what we were trying to govern here with our ordinances. So if somebody has any further comments, Ms. Ballard?
I don't think the issue is the use of the building at all. For me, the issue is, is why would we continue to nitpick and change zoning any way that we're going to change it in order to accommodate a particular business? I don't think that's correct. I think if they want to put this businesses, that's fine. It's a legal use business. They should find a C2 property to put it on. I think that my recommendation would be that we forward this to the City Council with the notation that it was a declined vote due to a tie, and let the City Council make the determination.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Bergen? Push your button there.
I would also add on there that all of the properties on that strip there are C1. I don't see making this exception.
Anybody else? If you'd like to come back to the microphone, I'll allow the applicant to come back and respond.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to address a couple of those comments, and if for the no votes, if there are any questions or issues we can address, we'd be happy to attempt to do so. Yeah, at the end of the day, I understand the concern about trying to stick exactly to the zoning code. As ownership has studied very closely, the C2 properties throughout town, there really aren't locations that will work. Whether it's this owner with this request in this location, this owner with the request in another location, another owner in the future with a request on another C2 property, more than likely from the studies we've done over the last six months to a year, those requests that come back before you are probably going to have an exception because there's residential homes behind the C2 zoning, or there's multifamily behind the C2 zoning, or there's a school that's 495 feet away. You know, there's going to be, it literally is, as the chairman alluded to, you know, our zoning districts are tough in that regard because everything is so interwoven and so close together, and the strip zoning that we have brings everything else so close. So I certainly understand the concerns, and that's why we tried to mitigate those as best as possible and bring forward a location that we felt was supportable. We typically wouldn't do bring this forward unless we thought it was supportable for those reasons, because the park is literally a secondary entrance, events only. I understand the concern about C1, C2. Like I said, we had those discussions with staff over, let's roll that through as, let's just bring it forward as a C1 PD, keep it as C1, and just have the PD allow that use. Staff, everybody felt that C2 was cleaner because it is this particular use, this particular subject is a permitted use in C2. So the request came forward to change it to C2. But again, at the end of the day, the site plan and the PD itself really limits the ability to do a lot of the uses, the heavier intense uses that one would be concerned about in C2. So again, that's why we're here in front of you. We felt it was a supportable location and that the exceptions we were asking, they're not legal requirements, as Kaylee alluded to. They're really just zoning district requirements. Every city has the ability to put the restrictions on this type of use as they see fit. Our zoning code has these restrictions, these setbacks in there. So obviously, we're asking for exceptions to a couple of those setback requirements. Anyway, that's the reason we're here. If there are any questions we can answer, we'd be happy to. Would if, obviously, we would appreciate if anyone would reconsider the vote, but if not, we'll certainly push forward and have the conversation with council accordingly.
I have a question.
Mr. McGowan.
How many other establishments are in Lake Havasu City that are open now doing the same thing?
There are currently two, and I'll let Jack expand on that, but what's important to...
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
My question on that, on those two establishments, were all the criteria met with no exception? Or was there, was something bent or changed to make it work? I guess that's my best way to ask the question.
Go ahead.
To my knowledge, no, they did not get any adjustments or changes done. And two, just for clarification, I'm sure some of you have seen some of the media, this isn't to bring a third license to the city. This is to enhance the option for one of the two current licenses. So we're not trying to bring an additional or a third marijuana license to town. That's not the goal for this location.
I do have one more question. I don't know, so I'm going to ask the question. What is the limit? Is there a limit? Is three the limit or 21 the limit?
There's not a limit per city. It's statewide, and to be honest, I don't know that number off the top of my head. But it is, it is, they've all been issued, so there's not any new licenses, to my knowledge, that will be opening in this area.
And maybe in the distant future could, depending on the size of the city. I guess there's a lot of stipulation before that happens.
Yeah, the state would have to issue those through the Department of Health.
Thank you.
Let's go back to Mr. Gordon's comments and clarification with regards to the C2 PD. If the PD aspect of this C2 application goes away, then there's no other C2 allowed, and I'm asking for the record, maybe of staff or council.
Maybe if I understand your question, Mr. Chairman, the, if this gets approved as a planned development, it will be contingent upon the development, the property being developed as per the proposed development plan or the site plan, if you will. So if the concern is what sort of uses would be allowed in that C2 district?
No, if the PD goes away, say they fold, you know, they fold or close their doors or something like that, what happens to the zoning of the property?
The property zoning will remain with the property. It does not go with the owner. So let's say this business failed and it went away. Someone else could come in there.
Trying to get that on the record is what I'm doing.
Right, and so that use that comes in there would have to operate in the same building, if you will, the same. So it could be other uses that are allowed in the C2, but by the nature of the way the lots developed, obviously, they're not going to do storage units because that's not going to work.
Or a gas station.
A gas station. It will basically be limited to retail, sales, and office with something that may have a drive-through, things like that. It would be something that would be allowed most likely in a C1 district in any event. It seems that if it's tied to the site plan, I have a hard time coming up with any more intense C2 uses that could be allowed on this if this current proposal doesn't work out and it remains C2 planned development tied to that specific development plan. I just, and that's what the applicant alluded to, this staff talking about different options. An option was, okay, what if we kept the C1 zoning and asked for exceptions to allow marijuana establishment? And that seemed like a slippery slope. So we thought, well, C2 would be maybe a better option here with a specific development plan that limits it. So the other more intense uses in this that may be allowed in the standard C2 would not basically be allowed because they wouldn't be able to fit into that building. So hopefully, I'm explaining that all right, but it seems like it would work for a C2.
That's the clarification I wanted. Thank you. Anybody else? Any other commissioners? Discussion, comments, motions?
Can I add one more thing?
Mr. Gordon, yes.
Just to answer the other part of Mr. McGowan's question, the two existing facilities, like Jack said, we believe there weren't any exceptions. However, when you look at the facilities, part of the problem with those existing locations is that they're small sites without parking, without good circulation. They were established when they were medical only, and now they do allow recreational, so that's increased the traffic. It's increased the use, and so those facilities, our opinion is, are going to struggle going forward operating in those locations because of the constraints of the site given those locations. Ownership's looking to provide an option for that for a better solution long term, so.
I do have another question just popped into my head.
Yeah.
Mr. McGowan.
Are, you're going to be open seven days a week, six days a week? The reason I bring that up is if you're open Sunday, then you're going to have people parking in your parking lot and walk into the event. We know that would happen, unless you blocked it off.
Right. I don't know. I'll let Jack address that.
And that would bring a lot of people to your building. I don't know if that's good, bad, or indifferent.
Yeah, this is strictly for the landlord, so the license or ultimate marijuana would just be a tenant in the facility. So that would be up to them on the hours that they would like to operate.
Yeah, and also, we talked about the drive-through, and that's, you did a beautiful rendering. It looks great. Nobody mentioned you're going to have walk-in business, right? So that means you're going to have employees and people in both those stories, and then people parking to go inside and people driving. So I guess you're set up for all that in your plan.
Yeah, if you look at the site plan, I mean, there are some parking spaces in front of the building as well, but the site is also part of the parking and common area. So there is obviously, there's a parking, here, we'll get back to it in a second. There's parking proposed in front of the building, right in front of the building on the left. There is existing parking in common on the right, and then obviously, there are large parking lots on both sides that this site has the use of that parking as parking in common. So we feel that those concerns are mitigated, and the reason the the drive-through looped all the way around the building on the site like it did was to try and prevent stacking issues and try and accommodate. It's, the amount of cars that that can stack is well beyond what code would allow, but knowing the concerns of other locations in town, we worked with staff to try and come up with a configuration. They didn't want traffic exiting onto London Bridge Road for a number of reasons. And so looping it around the building like that provides a lot of vehicular stacking distance and traffic flow. And there you can see there's five parking, four parking spaces immediately in front of the building. You have the parking across, you know, in that same parking lot across the driveline, and then there's parking in both directions as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Thank you.
Done. All right, we're still at the table. Is there any indication of a different motion? Now is going to be your last chance. I'm going to close the issue. All right, we're going to have to send this on to City Council as a failed motion due to a tie. Moving on, call to the public. This is the time in the meeting. If somebody wants to address the commission on any item whatsoever, now is the time to do so. Hearing nobody calling to the public, I'll close that portion. And future meetings, Mr. Morris.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, thank you. May 5 meeting's been canceled, and as well as the May 19 meeting. We have no items for May 19 or the 5th. The next regularly scheduled meeting would be June 2. I'm hoping we'll have an item by then, but June 2 will be the next meeting. The two May meetings have been canceled. June 2 is the next possible meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. We stand adjourned.